Right, good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting for March 7, 2022 to order. And the Auburn City Council meeting scheduled for tonight, Monday, March 7, at 7:00 PM will be held in person and virtually. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Rush. Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Malanga?
Here.
Councilmember Stern?
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
Here.
All right, this evening, we have four proclamations. Two of them I'm going to read from this location, and then two, we will be down at, in front of the council dais. So the first one, if you'll excuse me, I'm going to take my mask off for this. Is for Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic backgrounds served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women, or excuse me, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month, and encourage all residents to join me in honoring the historic and well-deserved tribute to women of every race, class, and ethnic background for contributions made to our community, state, and nation dated the 7th day of March 2022. Next is a proclamation for Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Whereas, problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds that has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities. And whereas, research indicates that thousands of adults and adolescents in Washington State have experienced gambling problems in their lives. And whereas, problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. And whereas, numerous professionals, individuals, and nonprofit organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment. And whereas, it is important that the gambling industry and the mental health, primary care treatment, and recovery communities join together to increase public awareness of problem gambling, its high co-occurrence with anxiety and substance use disorders, and to take measures to address this addiction. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to learn more about the signs of problem gambling and encourage action amongst friends, family, patients, and clients on the availability of treatment dated the 7th day of March 2022. Now, if you'll excuse me just a moment, I will head down to do two more presentations. Yes. Can't see us. Oh, it's got just a second. There we go. All right. And Councilmember Jay Rush, I believe we have guests with us this evening. I believe we have past President Mina Arum.
And that's.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much. Very nice meeting you as well. Thank you. Just going to set these right here for a moment. Thank you so very much.
All right, and this is for Tamil Heritage Day. All right. Whereas, there are currently around 9,000 Tumans residing within Washington State, and the celebration of their heritage would support the recognition of their unique native traditions. And whereas, the Tamil language is central to Tamil identity and is recognized as one of the world's longest surviving written and spoken languages, dating back more than 2,500 years. The Tamil language is widely spoken in southern India, Singapore, Sri Lanka, Canada, as well as many communities around the world. And whereas, the Tamil community has made significant contributions to our state's diverse culture and population, including preserving and promoting peace, togetherness, and the rich heritage of the Tamil language. And whereas, Auburn is committed to encouraging and preserving native cultures and heritage within our incredibly diverse community. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim March 9, 2022, as Tamil Heritage Day in the City of Auburn, and encourage all residents to join me in this special observance dated the 7th day of March 2022. Mina, I will present this to you.
Thank you very much.
And if you have any words that you would like to share, please. The camera will be right there if we have words you would like to say.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank our respectable Washington State Governor, Jay Inslee, for the Tamil Heritage Day proclamation last year. This was a great announcement for the Tamil community and the Tamil people who live in the greater Seattle area. I thank the respectable mayor of Auburn for handing over the proclamation. We are so grateful for that. I also thank respectable Wiltmore Mayor James for this great event and the love he has towards the Tamil language and the community. March 9, Tamil Heritage Day will be in the history forever. I am so proud to get the recognition for what I applied for. Once again, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for coming to this event. Waika Tamil Balargadan Permai.
Thank you so much. Thank you, James.
Thank you, everyone. It is an honor to be part of the Tamil community in Seattle. Our culture is very rich. I hope that we all learn about each other's culture because that is what makes us great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. He's the current president. Mr. Morgan Garret?
Victory?
Would you like to come up? And we've unfortunately already read the proclamation, but since you are the current president, if you would like to share a few words?
Sure. When I come. Well, we're doing.
And if you want to come over this way a little bit.
You want to say something?
If you have any words that you would like to share about.
That was fine. It's okay. Mina still up on side with that.
This is the proclamation.
All right. You can move up if you want to take photos. You don't have to sit there and worry about getting things away. I can't take mine off. You can take yours off. I cannot take mine off.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, please. Stay just for one more photo. We're not used to having people in person anymore.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you again very much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. The beautiful flowers. And look, freedom. Perfect.
Thank you then.
Thank you.
And then, I believe, Abhinata Pesci? Please. Did I say that anywhere near close? Please, if you would come up.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us. I did the best I could with bourbon today. I did the Ukrainian colors and then our City of Auburn pin as well to show that we are.
And I saw a sign when I came in. It was just so heartwarming. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anything that we can do to help. Yes. Right, Mayor's Proclamation. Whereas, previously ruled by the Soviet Union, Ukraine gained sovereignty in 1991 in pursuit of a true democracy, allowing for freedom of religion, speech, and cultivating their rich culture. Whereas, on February 23rd, Russian President Vladimir Putin launched a full-scale attack on the Ukrainian government and democracy itself, forcing hundreds of thousands to flee their homes and families to seek refuge. And whereas, the United States condemns this blatant violation of international law, calling this action unprovoked and unjustified, reassuring there is support for all actions taken by the Ukrainian military and all those involved. And whereas, Auburn is home to many Ukrainian families that add to our rich diversity within our community. And whereas, we share our support for all those who are deeply worried about the safety and welfare of their loved ones. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim solidarity for Ukraine and encourage all residents to stand united with our Slavic community in friendship and support for peace dated the 7th day of March 2022.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you would like to say?
Thank you. Yes, yes, of course. Am I speaking loud enough?
Yes, I think so. Yes.
Because I am here on behalf of our honorary consul of Ukraine, for Washington State. And I want to express our immense gratitude to everything that, all the support that you have been providing and for giving this proclamation. It means a lot to us. And even the fact that I came in and I saw that sign, Auburn stands for Ukraine, and this little pin, it seems like such a nuance, a little nuance, but it means so much to us. We feel that support. Two days ago, we had a rally in Seattle, Ukrainian rally in Seattle, and one of pastors was giving a speech, and he said that he had been talking to soldiers, and soldiers said that we feel your prayers. We feel the energy that is being sent from here over across the ocean. It means a lot to us. Thank you for your support. We believe, we know that the good will prevail over the evil. We believe that justice will prevail over injustice. And we believe that peace will prevail over war. We are very grateful to you. Thanks again, and we are looking forward to, when it's all over, to continue to develop even stronger relationships with the United States and with cities like yours. Thank you very much again. Thanks for having me here. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Oh, yes. I'm going to ask you if I could do that.
I'm honored. The last two years have been horrible for me.
Do you like a hug? Thank you so much.
And then if we.
Thank you. Heartwarming. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll send a link with the, I think, Tammy.
Tammy?
She was asking me about the link, so I will know.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Continue to be in our prayers.
Thank you.
All right, Council, thank you for, thank you for that time. We will now move to a presentation that we have. It's not time for Council Public Comment yet. We have a presentation by King County. And I believe I did see Leo Flohr. Yes, all right. So once we get this, once we remove the Council Public, okay. Leo, are you there?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I am.
Good evening, Leo. Thank you so much for joining us and for providing an update for us this evening on the isolation and quarantine facility. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Council members. Again, my name is Leo Flohr, and I have the privilege of directing King County's Department of Community and Human Services. And I am here to appear briefly and say thank you. You likely know that in late December, as we were seeing COVID cases arise well beyond any of the previous records that we'd seen in our community, we reached out to the City of Auburn and asked if we could use the Health Through Housing site that we have in the City of Auburn and use it to create a temporary isolation and quarantine facility. The city said yes. We're so glad that you did. Over the course of operations for seven weeks, we were able to provide a safe place for 209 people to not be in a shelter, to not be in a home with others while they were contagious with COVID. That's been a strategy that's really kept us in good stead over the last two years, and we needed the additional space and capacity in our system in January. And with the city's partnership, we were able on very short notice to set up a second isolation and quarantine facility. And in addition to being a place for those 209 people, it also allowed us to keep operations going at a similar facility that we have in Kent. Over the last two years, we've now been able to provide isolation and quarantine to more than 3,700 people in King County. Most of them are people who are experiencing homelessness. And when we're able to serve them and help them, we're able to keep them out of crowded congregate shelters often, where if they were there, the risk of spreading the disease would be very high. So we have now concluded operations at the Auburn facility. It was temporary, and we were able to cease operations there by the end of the month of February. And I asked the mayor if I might be able to come in just briefly this evening to say thank you for your partnership and for your leadership and for allowing us to provide a critical service at a critical time. We look forward to the ongoing partnership as we go forward with the Health Through Housing building. Just the next step there is to work with the city to select a provider. We've not yet completed that process, and we've been in close touch with your Community Services Department. So thank you for the time, Madam Mayor and Council members. Thank you to the City of Auburn for your partnership and for your leadership.
Leo, thank you so much. The job that you have, I know, is not an easy one, especially in times that we have been experiencing the last two years. Truly, it's been almost exactly two years since all of the shutdowns began to occur. And you have been a consistent and constant partner and someone that we are honored to work with in order to do the very best that we possibly can for our community. So thank you so much, Leo. It's always a pleasure to see you. And I look forward to the day that we can announce who the service provider will be for the Health Through Housing and bring people in and provide them with permanent supportive housing. Thank you so much. All right. We will go to appointments. All right, we will move to appointments tonight. We have two appointments. City Council to confirm the following appointments to the Business Improvement Area Committee of Rate Payers for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. That is Brittany Carlson and Katie Seldon. And Council, I believe you both received the information background for each of these potential appointments. And I would entertain a motion. Deputy Mayor Jay Rush? You don't need to turn your. No. There we go.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to accept, approve Brittany Carlson and Katie Seldon to a three-year term for the Business Improvement Area Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin? I second that. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jay Rush? No, don't turn your phone. You should be able to hear me through.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have looked through the the application for Brittany Carlson and Katie Seldon for the Business Improvement Area Committee, and they are solid candidates. And I would like the Council to approve their candidacy.
All right, thank you. Council, any questions or comments about the two appointments? If not, if you would please unmute. All those in favor of the appointments of Brittany Carlson and Katie Seldon to the Business Improvement Area Committee of Rate Payers, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Baggett? Are you there? Okay.
Councilmember Baggett, if you're there, I need you to turn back on your camera.
And Councilmember Malanga? As well, please. Councilmembers Malanga and Councilmember Baggett, if you could please turn your cameras on? Councilmember. Councilmember Malanga, are you there? Councilmember Baggett, I see that.
I had a technical problem here. I couldn't get back in. I vote aye for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Malanga?
I also have a technical problem with my Zoom, but I voted aye earlier.
All right, thank you. All right, all those opposed, please say no. All right, the appointments have passed. We have no agenda modifications this evening. We will move to audience participation. The public can participate in person or submit written comments in advance. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn, Attention Sean Campbell, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. You may fax comments to Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 253-804-3116. Or you may email to publiccomment@auburnlaw.gov. Sean, did we have any written comment for this evening?
No, Your Honor.
All right, we will turn it to, we do have members of the public here this evening, but is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Anyone that would like to speak? All right, I'm not seeing that we have anyone who wants to provide public comments, so we will move on. We had no correspondence this evening, but we will move to Council Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council, if any. And we will begin with Finance Ad-Hoc Chair Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Council Ad-Hoc Finance Committee, consisting of Councilmember Baldwin and myself, reviewed 36 pages of. reviewed thirty-six pages of claims vouchers totaling more than two point six million dollars dated March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the same period of February seventeenth through March, I believe, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, totaling more than two point seven million respectively. All questions by the committee for the Finance Department were answered at the committee's satisfaction. And upon completion of our review, the committee recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. And just one minor correction, it's February seventeenth to March second, not to March twenty-fourth. Okay, thank you. And we will move to Preservation Funding Chair, Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council members.
I muted.
Council members. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. The Pavement Preservation Funding Ad-Hoc Committee is consists of Councilmembers Stern and Councilmember Brown and myself. And we will be beginning our meetings during middle of March through April the twenty-fifth, sorry. April the twenty, yeah, April the fourth. And we will be bringing that to full council on April the twenty-fifth, study session. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council, just wait till we're all back in person and we have these fun things to do with microphones, because we'll still be well, we'll still have a remote option, but we probably won't each have our own device in front of us. All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda.
All right, thank you. For a second, Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
The Consent Agenda for this evening consists of minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Regular council meeting also, the claims claims and payroll vouchers described by Councilmember Baggett and recommended by the Finance Committee for approval by the full council. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and also the the Consent Agenda does include setting the date for a public hearing for new singular wireless. Are there any questions or comments from council? Right, hearing and Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Your Honor. One minor comment, I believe, Councilmember Baggett may have misspoke. It was thirty-eight pages, not thirty-six in the voucher review.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you need it for the minute, so just clarify.
All right. All right, questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? If you would please unmute, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Consent Agenda passes. We have no unfinished business. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution number fifty-six fifty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement admitting the city as a member of the Washington Multi-City Business License and Tax Portal Agency. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move the adoption of Resolution fifty-six fifty-one.
Thank you. And for the second, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number fifty-six fifty-one allows the city to join a multi-city business license and tax portal agency as principal agency which grants the city and its business access to customized online portal for online business and occupation, tax filing, and payments.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Right, hearing and seeing none, if you would please unmute, all those in favor, Resolution number fifty-six fifty-one, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-six fifty-one passes. Deputy Mayor, I should probably say all those except for you, please unmute. Councilmember Sterns, did you have? Nope, all right. Resolution number fifty-six fifty-three. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated, doing business as Vera Mobility for automated traffic safety camera equipment and services in school zones. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I jumped the gun. I move to adopt Resolution number five six five three.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. The goal of the School Zone Photo Enforcement Program is to encourage motorists to comply with reduced speed limits within school zones to improve safety for students, parents, and teachers. The City of Auburn has concluded negotiations with Vera Mobility to operate the automated traffic safety camera equipment and services for a period of five years with possible extension of up to four more.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? All right, if you would please unmute, except for you, Deputy Mayor. We're gonna get this, we're gonna get this. We're sitting right next to each other and with the with the wonderful technology that we have in this room. But there is an issue if we both have our have our volume up, so we will do it this way. All those in favor of Resolution number five six five three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye. All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-six fifty-three passes unanimously. All right, Resolution number fifty-six fifty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and the Association of Washington Cities for grant funding and to expend the funds for youth summer experience and enrichment programs. Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number five six five two.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Auburn was awarded two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars in grant funds from Association of Washington Cities. The Parks and Arts, Parks, Arts and Recreation Department will use the funds awarded this year to provide new recreation services to Auburn residents. This includes a mobile recreation program where staff will bring games, wheel and activities to different parks in our city. Anyone will be welcome to come and play. Our program will take children on outdoor adventures. There is also a scholarship program that will cover program fees for families who are unable to pay for these programs. And the normal summer camp program offered. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Brown, did you have a question? Okay. All right, all those in favor of Resolution fifty-six fifty-two, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, we will move to Mayor and Councilmember Reports. And then council, after that, we do have need for a closed session. So please keep that in mind as you provide your report this evening. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Jay Rash, and I will turn my camera, my volume down.
Thank you. On March second, two thousand twenty-two, as an alternate member of Growth Management Planning Council, we were briefed on the twenty-twenty-two Affordable Housing Committee Work Plan Item to strengthen the countywide planning's policy by responding to GMPC Motion twenty-one dash one. The Housing Affordable Committee for twenty-twenty-two membership are GN Cole Wells, County, King County Mayor, sorry. Mayor Nigel Urbig for Kenmore on behalf of SEA, Councilmember Molly Laramore Kent on behalf of SEA. Key facts of this affordable housing work include establishing and allocating the countywide and local need reporting and monitoring accountability mechanisms and identify countywide planning policy amendments for GMPC. Most of this work will be completed in two thousand twenty-two. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, next we have Councilmember Trout Manuel.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
No report, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilmember Sterns, I didn't mean to scare everyone.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. On March fourth, and then prior to that, on February eighteenth, I was co-chaired the Subcommittee of the State Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women's Task Force. We have a Community Services and Resources Subcommittee that Laura Platero and I co-chair. And so we're mapping out our goals for the next few years in terms of identifying resources for victims and families. And, you know, how how we can better serve people here in Washington and throughout the state who, you know, are part of this tragedy. And then last Thursday, I also participated as a co-chair of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Equity Advisory Commission. And we just continued to get updates on the regional housing plan, the regional transportation plan, and then we started to dive into the mobility access for people with mobility issues who need special transportation or access to that transportation. So that's a topic we're gonna continue to work on throughout the year. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malanga.
Sorry, I'm having all these issues with Zoom tonight. Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin.
And nothing else to report here, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I will just share a couple of things before we adjourn to the closed session. On Saturday, February twenty-sixth, I had the honor, along with our DEI manager Brenda Goodson-Moore, to attend the Black History Month Celebration at the outlet collection. I was there to provide a welcome, and our current Miss Auburn, Carrie Everett, entertained the crowd that had gathered out in front of the Nordstrom portion of the mall. And the event went on for several hours with cheer, with stomp, with tap, with vocals. It was a wonderful way to celebrate. We had two of our police officers there to recruit. As you know, we are looking for more diversity in our hiring. We had Commander Christian Adams and Officer C.C. Lee there with us. And it was a wonderful way to celebrate. Of course, it was at the end of Black History Month, but what a great way to to end that celebration. And we have completed one more podcast, the third in our series of podcasts on homelessness in Auburn. It's called That's So Auburn. You can find it where you find your podcasts, or you can go to our City of Auburn webpage at auburnlaw.gov, and you can find it there as well. This last session, the third installment has Kent Hay again, but also Debbie Christian from the Auburn Food Bank and who also oversees the Ray of Hope Resource Center and the Sundown Overnight Shelter. We had two people from the We Care Clinic, and we had a gentleman, Michael Prince, who has experienced homelessness and talked about what his experience looked like in the City of Auburn as as he was released from the Department of Corrections and sent on bus down here to Auburn, not knowing anyone. And so his story is one that will inspire people, I think, and so I hope you will tune in. We will have more more topics coming up, but since homelessness is something that so many people email, call, write in about, contact us at the grocery store, we felt that it was important that our first three programs be on that. And so we will now adjourn to a closed session. The City Council will adjourn into closed session per RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero sub four sub B for a discussion on collective bargaining for a length of twenty minutes. City Attorney Como, Human Resources Director Martenson, and Chief of Police Collier will be required to attend. And there is anticipated action to follow. So I will be leaving this meeting now. Council, you will need to log out of this meeting and then log into the link that you have for the closed session. We'll see you in just a few moments. and then log into the link that you have for the closed session. We'll see you in just a few moments. Are you in?
Yes.
I don't... Okay. Great. Good evening, Council. We will re... We will come back into Council. We have one item for consideration. It is Resolution Number 5656, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn and International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Lodge Number 160, for the years 2022 through 2024. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve IAM contract for 2022 to 2024, and Resolution Number 5656.
And Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments or for an explanation?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the HR team and the Police Supervisors Union for a well-put-together contract. Thank you.
All right. Council, are there any questions or comments? All right, if you would please unmute, except for you, Deputy Mayor. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5656, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution 5656 passes. All right, there is no further business required for this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
Right.